Good evening, everyone. It's June the 4th, 2019. The time is 6:30. We'd like to begin our city council meeting. We begin all of our city council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd please rise and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an item that's not on the agenda. We'd like to take a moment of silence to pay respects to the city employees and citizens of Virginia Beach whose lives were taken on May 31st. If you would just please take a quick moment of silence. Thank you. I would like to begin with roll call. City Clerk?
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Gabriel.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
That's nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'd like to now have our Vice Mayor Gabriel take us through the consideration of changes in the agenda and setting the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the following changes to the agenda be approved, removing executive session from Item 15. Item 15 will now be adjournment.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Schuster. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Counselor Gabriel?
Now, I would move that the agenda be set as changed.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to set the agenda as changed, and the second was by Counselor Pierce. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Our agenda now is set. The next item that we have on our agenda tonight is the, we have a couple of proclamations, and I'll start with those. First proclamation we have reads, "Whereas Laramie Pride Fest was founded in 2017 to raise awareness about Wyoming's LGBTQ+ community and their contributions to Laramie's unique, diverse tapestry in a positive and productive manner, and whereas Laramie Pride Fest joins annual pride celebrations across the United States and the world in commemorating June 2019 as the 50th anniversary of the Stonewall riots, the birthplace of the modern fight for LGBTQ+ justice and equity, and whereas LGBTQ+ citizens led by trans women of color, Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera resisted police harassment that arose out of discriminatory criminal laws that have since been declared unconstitutional during the Stonewall riots, and whereas the third annual Laramie Pride Fest is the most visible event in Laramie for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer LGBTQ+ community and their friends and their families to express pride in who they are and whom they love. Whereas Laramie Pride Fest is dedicated to ensuring that Laramie's LGBTQ+ community has a safe and inclusive environment to celebrate and honor their gender identities and sexual orientations, and whereas Laramie Pride Fest will raise awareness about Wyoming's LGBTQ+ community and their contributions to Laramie's unique diverse tapestry in a positive and productive manner, and whereas Laramie's LGBTQ+ community will celebrate pride during the month of June with events happening throughout the state including Cheyenne, Casper, Heindale, Lander, Laramie, and Jackson, and whereas the city of Laramie celebrates its diverse LGBTQ+ community and is committed to ensuring equality, equity for all Laramie citizens by fostering acceptance and preventing discrimination based on gender identity and sexual orientation, and whereas the city of Laramie was the first and remains one of the few municipalities in the state of Wyoming to have adopted a nondiscrimination ordinance that prevents its residents from being discriminated based upon their gender identity and sexual orientation through employment, public accommodations, and housing practice, and whereas Laramie's economy and culture are more prosperous when the civil rights of all people are equal and we recognize the LGBTQ+ community as being vital to Laramie's success as an economically strong and culturally vibrant city, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Joe Shumway, acting as mayor and president of the governing body of the city of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the month of June as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer Pride Month. In Laramie congratulate the third annual Laramie Pride Fest and encourage residents in Laramie and across the Equality State to join Laramie Pride Fest in celebrations and recognition of the accomplishments, history, and legacy of Wyoming's LGBTQ+ community." Signed by Jessica. I'd like to ask Jess Falsing to come forward to receive this, but first if you'd just give us some comments, and then we're going to invite some others to come up with you to take a picture. But go ahead, Jess. Thank you for being here.
So I'd like to say thank you, Mayor Shumway, and thank you, City Council. My name is Jess Falsing, and I am one of the organizers for Laramie's third annual Laramie Pride Fest. Since Robert West founded Laramie Pride Fest in 2017, the city has expressed its support with the signing of a proclamation three years in a row. You all have established a pattern now, so thank you. This reflects back to the passing of the nondiscrimination ordinance in 2015, which was Wyoming's first ever. As someone who identifies as queer and who knows so many beautiful members of our community, I cannot express how much your support, protection, and recognition means. As this is my second year with Laramie Pride Fest, I've also come to see the beauty of all who help and who have a passion for celebrating the diversity of our LGBTQ+ community here in Laramie and Wyoming. This is work we do together with an intersectional focus and centered on the legacy of Stonewall, Sylvia Rivera, and Marsha P. Johnson, which everyone here tonight is already a part of this work and a part of the celebration. I'd also like to thank our sponsors, the Matthew Shepard Foundation, Wyoming Equality, and the Shepherd Symposium on Social Justice. We have had overwhelming support from many local organizations and businesses, and a special thank you to the Laramie Dragonettes and Laramie Burlesque. While I admit that we have a long way to go still, and at the same time, we've also come a long way. To continue with Laramie Pride Fest, we need all of the support that we can get. We are releasing our full schedule of events today, right after the proclamation. All who wish to volunteer or who wish to become a part of our planning committee are more than welcome to join and to reach out to me or any of the organizers who are here today. We urge you to join us and to support Laramie Pride Fest. It is not possible to do this alone by any means. What we do is only possible together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Jess mentioned that there will be a poster that will be placed in the lobby of City Hall with all the events, so invite you to look at those and see which ones you'll be able to attend. Now Jess would ask everyone that's here to, you know, to come forward with you. I'll give you the proclamation, and then we want to take a group picture of all, everyone that's here to support these events, and then we'll have the city council gather together to take this picture. So if you'd come forward, we'll give you this, and then everyone else, come on up. Thank you. If you'll hold that for the picture.
Let us spread the big flag around.
Tall.
So we go up here too. Tall people back.
Vertically inclined people back here.
Yeah, I am a little more vertically inclined than most people.
I'm going to have to go ways back. See? Oh, Jessica's going to make it.
Is everybody able to be seen?
One side in the back, in the green. Yeah, you.
Yeah, you. I was like, what?
Or maybe I should move my position. There's a lot of you, so. Are you? Yeah.
She's tough to deal with. You guys got to realize it.
All right, there we go. Thank you.
Don't clap.
It's like even down to your neck, they're almost hitting it, so it's like, oh, thank you.
I hope all the events go well.
I don't know.
I hope it goes really pretty.
It's very, very blue.
Oh, that's what it is.
I'm sure.
I ate a lot of dirt as a child.
All right, let's go ahead, and there's a second proclamation. I'd like to read it this time. Whereas Mrs. Belaski was presented the award of the 2018 Outstanding Impaired Driving Prosecution at the Wyoming Impaired Driving Conference in Laramie on May 8th through 9th, 2019, and whereas Holly Austin Belaski has served as the City of Laramie Assistant City and Prosecutor Attorney since October 2015, and whereas Mrs. Belaski was nominated by Traffic Enforcement Attorney Ashley Schluck in her role as the Wyoming Traffic Safety Resource Prosecutor for the state of Wyoming, and whereas Mrs. Belaski has prosecuted several hundred driving while under the influence cases, including 15 jury trials, and has attended various trainings, included the Drug Recognition Expert Course in May of 2016, and the Advanced Roadside Impaired Driving Enforcement Course, and whereas Ashley Schluck's Traffic Safety Resource Prosecutor says, Holly was the one of the two prosecutors in the state of Wyoming selected to receive this award. She was chosen for her unwavering and passionate dedication to protecting our community from impaired driving offenses. Holly faces challenging impaired driving cases with devotion and commitment to ensuring justice is served. She is dedicated to her ethical obligation to pursue difficult cases when other prosecutors might take the easy way out by dismissing or amending them. She never shies away from a difficult case and is avid about keeping the community safe from impaired drivers. Prosecuting impaired drivers is a thankless job, and despite that fact, Holly tirelessly does her job to keep impaired drivers off our roads, and whereas 2018, there were 697 alcohol-involved traffic crashes, which included 32 crashes with fatalities, and 270 were injury crashes per Governor's Council on Impaired Driving website, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Joe Shumway, acting as mayor and president of the governing body of the city of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim June 4th, 2019, as the day of recognition for Holly Austin Belaski, 2018 Outstanding Impaired Driving Prosecutor, and encourage the residents and city staff to recognize the outstanding work and commitment she has brought to our community. Signed by Joe Shumway. So Holly, if you'd come forward and make some comments, and then I'm going to give you this, and then we're going to invite your family to come up, but go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm humbled and speechless, which is pretty rare for an attorney, to lack words. I'm very grateful for the recognition. Janine, thank you very much for taking a chance on hiring me. Bob, every day in my office, makes my job really fun and great. My legal assistant, Kimberly Harding, she makes me look good. She's really the one, so I have to thank her. Obviously, Ashley Schluck for not just the kind words, but the very gracious nomination. I had no idea it was coming, so very surprised. And definitely to Laramie's law enforcement community. We have wonderful officers, and they make my job really easy. And then obviously, my family. I couldn't have this job without the support of my wonderful husband of over 15 years, and my kids, who I think are just the best kids in the whole world, so have to thank them. But thank you, Council, for the proclamation and the recognition. I'm very humbled.
Well, thank you, Holly. Now we're going to ask your husband, Jeremy, to come up. Jeremy is a firefighter for the city of Laramie, and then we're going to have your two children come up. We have Remy and Lily. And we're going to come up and get a picture of all you with the city council, so you're going to make the city council look good.
That's right.
So thank you for being here. Come on up, and we'll do a picture.
We'll do Holly's phone first here. One, two, three. Two, three. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to, and again, thank you all for coming for the proclamations. We're now going to get into other council items, but we'd like to have the city clerk, if she would read the notice of the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will meet at 6:30 PM on June 4th, 2019, in the city council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments on the following. TA-18-01, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 15.10.030.E and 15.28.100.A.310 of the Laramie Municipal Code to Allow For The Use Of Shipping Containers Within The City Separate From The Temporary Use Requirements. All applications, plans, and specifications relative to this matter are available for review at the City of Laramie Planning Office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting. Written comments may be mailed to City Council care of City of Laramie Planning Office, PO Box C, Laramie, Wyoming, 82073. And we'll just leave it at that.
All right. So that's the item. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against this proclamation, which public hearing, I'm sorry, which is to amending Chapter 15.100, whatever, on shipping containers? Anyone here that'd like to speak? Seeing none, then we'll close this public hearing. Now we have some announcements. I'll turn the time over to our city manager. Do you want to announce? Who are the announcements?
Yes. Mayor and Council, we have one announcement tonight. We wanted to introduce to you the new director of the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, David Fraser is with us. As you know, the WAM organization has been in transition over the last probably 18 to 24 months. We are excited to have David in the position of directing WAM. Pretty dynamic leader with a robust history of experience in municipal matters around the country, including, I believe, leading the Nevada League of Cities. So with that, I'd like to give David an opportunity to introduce himself to you. He was traveling through on his way back to Cheyenne tonight, and we thought it'd be a good opportunity to put a face to a name, so, David.
Welcome, Mr. Fraser.
Thank you. Thank you, Janine. Janine did a great job with the introduction. She does a great job with everything. She did tell me that after I was introduced, I could say whatever I wanted. And so I'm going to make her squirm with that. I did read the rules of etiquette, so. Yeah, thank you. It's great to be here. One thing that Janine didn't mention is that I grew up in Sundance. And she mentioned that after that, I, at least she referred to the fact that after that, going off to college, getting married, I dragged my poor wife all over the country. I'm a recovering city manager, so I've managed cities in four different time zones, and had, we have four kids, they were all born in a different state. And I also, in addition to that, spent 10 years as the executive director of the Nevada League of Cities, as was mentioned, and so, and I enjoyed that job. You know, mind you, it's not all easy. There's, you know what I mean? It's a job, and it's not all sunshine and lollipops, but I did enjoy it, and so when I had the opportunity to apply to do that same job back home, I jumped at it. So just great to be here. I'll stay brief because I know you've got a lot of other things to talk about. You know, perhaps, and I would certainly take any questions, but perhaps, Your Honor, would it be all right if I just took a moment and kind of shared a little behind the curtain during the hiring process? That's all right?
Sure.
So, you know, this is stuff I didn't know until I came on board, and then, you know, then I've since heard kind of what, you know, a little bit about it. Apparently, they, you know, we did preliminary interviews, video interviews, and then they chose finalists to come in to Cheyenne during the winter conference and interview, and we interviewed most of the day, and I'm not sure how many of you were on those panels. There were three different panels that we went through. And so after we're done with all those interviews, you know, they sent us out so they could talk among themselves, and we went home or whatever, but apparently, as the Board of Directors gathered, they were debating, you know, who to hire from among them, and so somebody offered up right away, well, obviously, we ought to hire the most experienced of the group, the job. So they had a brief discussion, decided on who that was, and someone was asked to make the phone call. They did, and the job was turned down. So they regrouped and thought, well, if we can't get the most experienced candidate, what, you know, what in the world do we do? And after a lot of discussion, finally, somebody came up with the idea, well, if we can't have the most experienced candidate, let's get the most popular candidate, so that at least, you know, at least regardless of how well they do or how experienced they are, at least, you know, people will like them, and that'll be good for the association. So they decided to do that, and again, someone made the call, and again, the answer was no. So back together they came, and they were really stumped at this point, apparently, and after a lot of discussion, somebody said, well, if we can't have the most experienced candidate or the most popular candidate, let's just get the best-looking candidate, so that regardless of how they do the job, at least we'll enjoy being around them. And so once again, the call was made, and I couldn't say no a third time, so I accepted the job. With that, I would thank you. Rough group, tough room. Anyway, it's great to be here. If any of you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and otherwise, I'd be happy to quit taking up your time. I do look forward to coming back on another occasion, though, and spending a little more time.
Yeah, we will be meeting with you and your staff in July for a work session, so we're looking forward to that. And since you've asked, is there anyone on the council that has any questions? Counselor Doherty used to...
I have a, it's just something to think about for July, is that balancing the big cities and the small towns, and where it puts the few big cities in that scheme, I think. So that's something that I think concerns a lot of us, so I hope you have...
David and I have had that conversation. That's part of his homework, so I'm looking forward.
So when we talk in July, I'd like to hear your ideas, so...
I'd be happy to give a brief answer to that or to postpone it to July, whatever the chair would say.
You can wait, yeah.
Wait, wait is the...
All right. I'll look forward to talking about that in July.
Great. Okay. Anything else? Welcome. We're glad you're here. Thank you for stopping by and thinking of us, and we're looking forward to meeting with you in July.
I am too. It's great to be in Laramie. It's, I always loved coming here as a kid, so...
I'm sure you're glad to have your family join you.
Oh, I can't tell you.
His wife just finished teaching, and they're all packed up and back in Cheyenne now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any disclosures from anyone in the city council for any items that is on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we'll now go back to the Vice Mayor Gabriel, if you will take us through the approval of the consent agenda.
I would move that the consent agenda be approved, that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second. Okay. The motion's been made to approve the agenda, and it's been seconded by Counselor Schuster. Do we have a roll call?
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Thank you. So the consent agenda has been passed. Now we move to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is item number 10. I've asked Counselor Schuster to introduce item number 10.
Okay. The title is Original Ordinance Number 1997, Amending Chapter 15.10.030.E and 15.28.100.A. 310 of the Laramie Municipal Code to Allow The Use Of Shipping Containers Within The City Separate From The Temporary Use Requirements. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 1997 as recommended by the Planning Commission on second reading in accordance with the findings of facts, conclusions of law, and note, a public hearing was held on June 4th, 2019.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, good evening. This item is the second reading. At the first reading, we had some questions, we had some discussion, and there were no recommended changes at that time. One thing I did do is Councilmember Stalder had asked the exact numbers, and I kind of gave you the, like, off the cuff, so I just wanted to go back for the past couple of years. So far in 2019, we've had two enforcement cases. 2018, we had five. 2017, we had four. And so it's kind of where we're at right now. I thought I'd give you real numbers instead of off-the-cuff numbers, but I was pretty close. I said five each, I think, so...
Appreciate the follow-up.
Yeah, so, just as a recap, I think Member Harrington was the only one here currently under City Municipal Code. Storage containers are allowed as a temporary use only. There are no provisions within, anywhere else in the city to allow them in storage yards or for accessory to the main use on the site. That's what these provisions do, and depending upon the zoning district, certain amounts are allowed as long as they meet the requirements as specified in here. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions since we didn't have any changes. I'm going to kind of leave our discussion at that for brevity, and then we'll go from there, so...
Counselor Pierce.
So this is not a question related to the ordinance. What it is, is our public hearing announcement, it was written Unified Development Code, and our city clerk said Municipal Code, and then under the ordinance on number 10, it is Laramie Municipal Code. So seeing as I'm sitting in Klaus's chair, and I'll just continue with the noting of differences or not, and bring it to somebody's attention. I'm sure it's just a scrimmage thing, but...
I mean, Mayor and Council, so the Unified Development Code is the Laramie Municipal Code as well.
I get that, but...
So, yeah.
I just...
And they would be, so that, I see what you're saying. There's the difference in the language there.
Yeah.
So referencing the same sections, so we could clarify that and rectify that pretty easily. That's not too difficult, so we can do that for the final reading, no problem.
Perfect.
All right. Counselor Pierce really didn't have a question. She's just reminiscing about Klaus.
That's it. Seeing as I'm in the chair, I just feel compelled.
Counselor Weaver.
Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I do have some questions. Mr. Chaney, I expressed to you some of the concerns that I had both in the meeting and then in a quick conversation we were able to have outside of the meeting, and I still intend to support this, but I still can't help but shake the feeling that what we're doing is amending the code to accommodate some existing business owners that don't want to abide by the regulations that we have or have found problematic for various reasons and have approached the city for a remedy, and we're going to do that. On its face, that's not such a bad thing necessarily in this case, and we're... Since I'm in the chair, I just feel.
That's it. Okay, Councilor Weaver.
Unfortunately, Mr. Mayor, I do have some questions. Mr. Tini, I expressed to you some of the concerns that I had both in the meeting and then in a quick conversation we were able to have outside of the meeting. And I still intend to support this, but I still can't help but shake the feeling that what we're doing is amending the code to accommodate some existing business owners that don't want to abide by the regulations that we have or found problematic for various reasons and have approached the city for a remedy, and we're going to do that. On its face, that's not such a bad thing necessarily in this case, when we're looking at such a limited number of issues. My question is, if we're to see this crop up as something that's happening much more and to a much larger extent, is this something in code that we might have to revisit if we're now looking at, oh, let's say, 15 of these or 20? Would that be something we'd want to revisit? Or do we think that this change to the code can accommodate some significant growth in the way that the storage containers are used and placed in the community in the various different zones? Mr. Mayor, that's my question.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, so first off, really, the, you know, the impetus of this, I'm going to say, was not to accommodate any existing businesses.
Fair enough.
I mean, if there are existing businesses that have them, they're in violation. We haven't had the ability to even allow them since the adoption of our codes prior even to the Unified Development Code. So, that being said, I think when we were looking at this, one, there was the enforcement component that I, the member Stalder had mentioned, kind of like, how many, you know, how much are we dealing, the time that it takes, you know? Once these things get plopped down, they're kind of hard to move, you know? They're not the easiest thing just to kind of move over. They're not a shed where they hook a truck up and drag it around their yard to get it back in a setback or something, which we deal with a lot, you know, but it's easily remedied. In terms of the actual shipping containers and, you know, trying to provide an avenue to legitimize when appropriate is really kind of the summary of what this is. And so, now, going to your second part of your question, which is, you know, are we trying to, you know, are we going to have more instances of this? I don't know if we'll have more instances of people buying containers. I mean, I think people will still do them and try to put them on their site. I think that that's going to happen no matter what. People don't follow the rules all the time in all sorts of avenues, so I think this will be no different. However, I at least have a mechanism to maybe make it allowed in those areas in which we've kind of said, yes, one, three, or more. And so, if we were not to see something like this, we then would revert back to, you only have six months, and then they would have to remove them, which, if, you know, council so chooses, this ordinance could be denied, and that could be our, you know, that could be our status quo, and that's fine if that's what, you know, council's desire is. What you find across most communities and in most places in the country, there's some ability to allow this. It varies across the board, there's a lot of differences, but most communities allow this in some fashion. And remember, this doesn't mean, you know, if you bring a bunch of containers in, connect them and make them building code compliant and things, we're not talking about that. We're talking about using the containers as storage on a site accessory to the principal use already established. So, that'd be kind of my, that's kind of my take on it, so.
Well, all right, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the answer to that question. I just, and I hate to pose this hypothetical type of questions, but sometimes we have to. I mean, sometimes we have to, to say, well, what is our plan if we see a big increase in this? And I appreciate that our planning department, you know, does take that into account when they're trying to come up with some policies. I still have some reservations about this, I'm going to go ahead and vote for it because it's probably nothing I should be concerned about. But I'd like to hear a little bit about what we might do in situations where we saw more growth in this than I suppose I might find beneficial to the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Weaver. This item, if we don't have changes or much more comment about this, this will probably go on to the consent agenda for the third reading. You're welcome to take that off on the third reading, but if you want to have all these things resolved, do that prior to the third reading, so that we know where we are. Anyone else wants to have any questions regarding shipping containers? Yes, Councilor McKinney.
In this, like you said, just regular standard homeowner in a residential area, and they're using it as a storage shed for bicycles or lawn equipment, like a normal storage shed. In parts of this, I'm reading, it says the allowed amount of time is six months, or is that being removed? Or is that what's being added in? Has to be removed in six months.
Councilor Tini? I'm sorry, Director.
Mayor and Council, respect the position, but no. So, the six-month language is related to what will remain in code, which is, we have lots of instances where, like, especially in residential areas, that someone will bring in a shipping container, or they're commonly the pods, they're like the actual company, and what people will do is, like, clear their house out, put all their stuff in it, do a remodel, and then bring all their stuff in. We allow that under the six-month provision, we're keeping that in there, because we don't, it's a really useful tool, people use it a lot. In the current code, what you're allowed to do is you can, in all these zoning districts, we're recognizing that, that that six-month provision is still allowed in those, like, residential zoning districts. But outside of that, if they want to be there for longer than six months, they would fall under the provisions that we're adding in. And so, like, for instance, like, in a residential zoning district, they're not allowed at all. Whereas in those other zoning districts, so like business zoning and beyond, so more intense zoning districts, they would be allowed. Numbers are restricted, and then they have to be placed as part of the site plan and properly screened and things like that. And so, is that, was that your question, or am I missing?
What you're talking about, they're not allowed in residential at all?
No.
Period.
Period. The only time they would be allowed in a residential zoning district is, in some of our residential zoning districts, including the NBO and DC District, they're not allowed. But if you have uses that are non-residential, so we have some businesses that are in residential zoning districts, typically those go through, like, the conditional use process, you're allowed to, up to one container, if it's approved as part of the conditional use or site plan process. Because there are, like, the R3 zoning district, for instance, does allow certain businesses, like some basic office uses and things like that. And so, with the, going into that type of a use, we do allow it in those, I guess, more limited instances.
Okay, and after the six-month timeframe, are you, is there a grace period before you can bring another one back? Or is it going to be permanent? You can never bring one back after the six months?
So, that would go through the temporary use process again, okay? So, it is possible, I mean, let's say someone does a remodel in their basement and needs a pod, and they bring it in for six months, and then they come in to get some more building permits and ask for another temporary use. We could allow that, that's perfectly fine.
No permanent structure for a storage facility for household, or not household ends, but.
You wouldn't be able to leave it in the backyard permanently, no. Yeah.
Sorry, Mayor.
That's okay. You're welcome to ask as many questions, just make sure you do it to the proper way. Do you have another question?
They're just such a, they're just such a bit down.
Go ahead.
I'll wait for discussion.
We'll go for comments later.
Yeah, I'll wait for that.
Any other questions? Anyone else have any questions regarding shipping containers? Anyone from the audience that has any questions or comments regarding shipping containers in this ordinance? Yes, please come up and give us your name. And then, after you've made your comment, there's a place for you to sign right there, but that's after you've made comments, just sign your name, so we have that for the record.
Sweet. My name is Anastasia Marquise. I was wondering how this would relate if people were to bring in shipping containers to build houses out of, like tiny houses, and if that would apply under this kind of policy or whether it would apply elsewhere? I know it wasn't noted anywhere, and it might be outlandish, but.
In the first reading, we did discuss that.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Tini, would you come up and he'll give you the answer to that, so. And then, you can stick around if you have any other questions for Mr. Tini, too.
Mayor and Council, as you noted, we did mention this during the first reading. So, shipping containers, you know, we're seeing people convert them into houses, commercial spaces, all sorts of things, I mean, the sky's the limit. Anything like that would just need to comply with our building codes and be properly constructed, that mean our building codes, there's provisions in building codes to allow that. There's, you know, unless maybe some restrictive covenants in certain areas prohibit it, generally speaking, they would be allowed, and you could make that happen in the city of Laramie as the codes are written today, so.
Okay, not a simple solution, but it's potential.
Yeah, I mean, it varies very much across the board as to what type of building you're trying to construct with them and how you're trying to use them and how you orient them. There's a lot of factors involved in that, but it's doable. People do it all the time, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Anything else from the audience? Back to the council. Any comments from the council regarding this item? Councilor Schuster.
Thank you. I, you see them on Facebook all the time. I've seen them where people split them in half and made them into swimming pools. We had a retail business on Third Street, down at the south end of town, that did it out of a shipping container. It's gone now, it's in that vacant lot area where they tore several buildings down, but there used to be a shipping container there that a guy ran a business out of. So, I've seen them, so there's, like our person from the audience was asking, it is completely doable, but I imagine insulation and electrical service and all kinds of stuff would be really fun, but I know that tiny homes are really fun to start out with, too, so. That'll be my comment on that, that it is doable. A lot of people use them for several different things.
Okay. Any other comments from anyone else in the council? Okay. Seeing no other comments, could we have a roll call?
Pierce.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay. Item number 10, it passes, it's drawn on the third reading, which we will put on the consent agenda for next City Council meeting. Item number 11, Councilor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I move to approve Resolution 2019 dash 47, authorizing the submittal of an application to the State Land and Investment Board to reallocate funds from the 2013-2014 Countywide Consensus Awards and authorize council members to sign the resolution.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Councilor Schuster. Mr. Webb.
Honorable Mayor of City Council, the 2013-2014 Countywide Consensus funding included funds for the B-line sewer replacement between Garfield and Park Streets. That project is completed, came in under budget, and there's $179,113 remaining. We have the opportunity to reallocate those funds to another project. If we don't do that, we could lose the funds completely. So, the purpose of this resolution is to authorize all council members to sign the resolution, and then we will submit the application with the resolution to the State Land Investment Board, and whereas what we're doing is reallocating those monies to the West Laramie Storm Drain Improvement Projects. This resolution's a little different than what you've normally seen, it's set up by SLIB, it's this big spreadsheet, and as mentioned earlier by the mayor, all council members sign it. It went to Rock Rivers Town Council last night for their signature, got ran in this morning to a county commissioner's sign this morning, and then Nancy ran across the street this afternoon and grabbed it for us tonight. So, with that, I'll take any questions if you have.
Insert.
Councilor Stalder.
Good projects.
Is there any specific plans for what part of the stormwater improvement, or any specific projects, I guess?
Well, Mayor, Councilor Stalder, so currently, in the budget, we have the Madison Line improvements in West Laramie. Those are the improvements that need to be completed before Wyoming Avenue can be constructed. So, the monies would be going into that project. That project's right now budgeted out at 1.1 million, and so this would help fund that project.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Webb? Any other questions regarding this allocation of money? Which, by the way, is, even though Rock River and the county commissioners agreed to this, 100% of the money that's available is the city's portion of the funding, and so it will remain with the city for the projects which we mentioned. Yes, Councilor Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, then if I understood that right, the reason we're in a position to do this, and I support it, you know, it's one piece at a time out there in terms of what we can do, at least that's the way we're operating now, but it's just a rebudget because we had a project that we were able to get done under budget, I heard Mr. Webb say. So we're able to put this into that project, so that's fortunate.
Yep. On the specific purpose tax language, it's very specific to the projects that are being, the money is being allocated to. Wyoming was not specifically named, so it has to have approval from all three bodies, and that's why we're going through this, so that we can complete the expenditure. Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Roll call.
Weaver.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, item number 11 passes, and then the next item is related to that. Councilor Doherty.
I move to approve Resolution 2019 dash 48, authorizing the submittal of an application to the State Land and Investment Board to reallocate funds from the 2015-2016 Countywide Consensus Awards and authorize council members to sign the resolution.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded by Councilor Pierce.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, same deal, this is just from 1516 Countywide Consensus Fund. The monies remaining are from the 15th Street Reconstruction Project. This one is $15,305. We'll roll that into the same application package that will go toward Laramie Storm Water Improvement Project.
Any questions? Any questions or comments from the audience? Any comments from the council? Roll call.
Stalder.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, that item also passes. Now we're on to public comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make public comments on any non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, now we go to the council. Do you have, does the council have any future council work session topics that they would like to introduce at this time? We still have quite a list that we're working on, but we're.
Yeah, yeah.
Getting that trimmed down, and then we'll probably have more. On the.
Upcoming meetings.
Upcoming meetings, I want to remind everyone that we're back here on Thursday for a work session, so be sure to keep that on your calendar, six o'clock, and we'll be here in council chamber, so, yes.
Mayor, if I could add to that, that is a joint meeting with your Environmental Advisory Committee, so we'll have them joining you as well.
Lot of new information that we're going to be getting, it'll be a very interesting meeting to attend. All right, anything else on any upcoming meetings? Anyone wants to make any comments on? All right, we're going to move then to item number 15. Councilor Pierce.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Seconded by Councilor Schuster.
It could be.
Schuster, Gabriel, Harrington.
All in favor of adjournments indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you all.